We are in the recording.
Okay. Do you want me to put the wide angle on, or you got the... Never mind. Okay. The Historical Review Commission meeting for June 13th, 2024 will now come to order. Ms. Hill, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Starr.
Here.
Mr. Sawyers. Mrs. Ellsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Philkins.
Here.
Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Ms. Poland. Mr. Swallow.
Here.
Mr. Deal.
Here.
Mr. West.
We do have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Okay. Commission members, in your packet was the... Were the meeting minutes from March 14th, 2024. Were there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the meeting minutes from March 14th. Any discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Any abstentions? They are approved. We have one item on the agenda, and that is a front porch... Covered front porch addition. Mr. Hill, will you read the item, and we'll see if I can pull up the information here?
Yes, this is... Let's see here. 2024 HRC number two, covered front porch addition. Herb Yoder requests for Lauren Miller to add a 12-foot by 7-foot covered front porch to 103 East Sugar Street.
Okay. Is there anyone here who is speaking on behalf of this project?
This was set before BZA last week, when we failed to get a quorum, and I wonder if there was some confusion because of the way these were set, with the applicant not appearing today.
Can you speak... Oh, we've got...
I was told by Quentin earlier today, he asked me if we were going to have a quorum for this body, and I said I hope so, because they were coming from the...
Yes.
Go on in.
Right now. Okay.
Okay, we have some... Are you speaking on behalf of this covered front porch project?
Yes.
Okay, well, we are to that point where we need someone to describe it for us, so...
Well, okay.
If they're... Yeah.
If you could please read that. My name is Herb Yoder. My address is 27551 Newcastle Road, Gambier, Ohio. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. Ms. Yoder, would you explain the project that you have, and I've got... We've got your application up here also, so we can show on the screen, so...
Yes. They would like to add a 7-by-12 addition to the front of this house. There are currently concrete steps there. We're going to try to, of course, match the architecture of what they have there. She would like to have the arched front on that, and we'll use all wood and painted wood for the framing and things of that. The foundation will be cement block, but then we're going to veneer stone that foundation, so it's very similar to... As close as we can get to what the existing stone will look like. We were supposed to have a meeting with the zoning appeals to try and get... Because the frontage isn't quite what it should be, but that didn't happen, I guess it was last week, but that will happen the 26th, I believe.
Okay.
Yep. So the roof material will be the same. The soffit material will all be the same as what's there, so...
Any questions for Mr. Yoder?
How big is the porch now?
Um, I think it's like 7 by 6, but it's inset. It doesn't come out, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Yoder? Does anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this project? Against this project, or in general? Okay. I'll wait for Rob to get back. Rob, do you see any legal considerations with this request?
I'm sorry, no, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Ball, do you see anything engineering-wise?
No. I'm not reviewing the structural aspect of it, but there's our public infrastructure. There's no issues whatsoever.
Okay. Well, since there's no other public comment, then we will close the public comment portion of this, and we will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved for the acceptance of this proposal?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
It moved and seconded for the acceptance of this proposal. Any discussion? Mr. Hill, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Starr.
Yes.
Mr. Sawyers. Mrs. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Philkins.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Poland. Mr. Swallow.
Yes.
Mr. Deal.
Yes.
It is approved.
Thank you.
We're coming now. We do not have anything else on the agenda, unless anybody has anything else that they can bring up. Before we get started, move into the Municipal Planning Commission. If not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. That concludes the Historical Review Commission. We'll take a minute to switch things over for Municipal Planning.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Yoder.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry we're late.
Paying for my sticker.
Getting around Gambier is a little more difficult now.
Yeah, that's true.
That's your two minutes.
Mm-hmm. Well, good to see you. Take care.
Thanks. Yeah, Sibley's not here, so I'm the only one leaving.
Yeah, it's always still the record. Thank you. I think we're ready to get started then. Okay, the Municipal Planning Commission for June 13th, 2024 will now come to order. Mr. Hill, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Starr.
Here.
Mr. Sawyers. Mrs. Ellsworth.
Here.
Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Swallow.
Here.
Mr. Deal.
Here.
Mr. West.
So we have a quorum for this, too. Thank you. Okay. Commission members, in your packets were the minutes for the special meeting held on June 6th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections to that? If not, we will entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
I would move such.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. They are approved. We have two items on the agenda for this afternoon, and we'll start with the Gilchrist Estates. Todd, will you... Ms. Hill, will you please read the item, and then we'll get rolling on that.
Yes, this is item number 112024, Gilchrist Estates subdivision Phase II final plat per codified ordinance 1135.07. A final plat has been submitted for review by the Municipal Planning Commission. Description of request is approval of Gilchrist Estates Phase II final plat.
And who's speaking on behalf of this? Come on up, and we'll have you swear in, and the floor will be yours.
My name is Chad Van Sickle. Address is 4513 Dover Zoro Road, Dover, Ohio. I affirm my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Welcome. Floor's yours.
Yeah. No, so we're here to seek approval for the Phase II final plat at the Gilchrist Estates. We're obviously in progress out there. Phase II is... Infrastructure's being completed. We are ready to do some curbing, some asphalt, base asphalt and curbing's going in here in the next few days, so by the time this is recorded, we should have curbs and asphalt done, base asphalt. Storm sewer's in, water line's being finished up. Storm ponds are constructed, working on sediment traps right now, and so we're here to seek Phase II final plat approval, so...
Okay. Any questions that you had for Chad?
So far with the development, there's been... Have there been any runoff issues or water issues, to your knowledge?
For Phase II, I think we've been okay. Nothing I've been aware of, as far as runoff site, runoff, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Chad? Okay. Just clarification, this is recommendation, or is this a approval? I can't recall what the...
Approval.
This is approval. This is a site. Yeah, this is specific.
You know, with the preliminary plat, they go out and rough everything in. Then, you know, like if you... Like this site had heavy rock, and if we had to move the sewer line or adjust the road, then they would do that and then present a final. So the idea is, we've been out there, I don't know, since January, building this, and it's close enough that we know where the lots are going to be. So as soon as this step is done, the final plat approval, then they can start selling lots. Now, we are not... You, as this group, are not accepting the road and the... You know, they have to go build it. So where we would be is you're authorizing them at this point to sell the lots.
Got it.
Now, where we are on Phase 1, they still own the road, because that hasn't been... The final acceptance of the utility in a road hasn't been completed for Phase 1. We're really close on that. Partly, we're holding off because we don't want to put the top lift asphalt on until, really, we're probably into Phase 3, because it'll just get damaged by all the trucks. So we're doing to do a phase bond release on Phase 1, so the things that are done and signed off on will reduce the bond, because they're going to have 100% bond on Phase 2, until aspects of the job passes inspection and service, if that makes sense. You're basically this signing off on the, hey, it's time to sell some houses. And that... These are the road names you want and the reserve areas, so the ponds have been constructed. They generally... I'll let your surveyors attest to that. The ponds are inside the reserve areas.
Right.
So that's the idea, is like, may have started to build a pond and realize it has to bump off into a different lot between your preliminary and your final plat.
Okay.
So it looks good. We've... This job, this part, we've had full-time inspection, contract services, and, you know, it's starting to look like this out there, if you haven't had a chance to be out there.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this project, against this project, or for this project, or in general? Hearing none, Mr. Barn, do you see any legal concerns?
No. They've... But like, as Mr. Ball said, they've already done the preliminary plat. This is the final plat. It just gets reviewed by Municipal Planning. Council does not have a say. However, whenever they finally get around to dedicating the roads and everything, that's when council will have their final approval on everything.
Yep. Mr. Ball, anything to add to what you've already... Okay. Then we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting, and we'll move on then to the commission, and we will then entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept that, this final plat. I thank Mr. Ball for the explanation, because if my memory's correct, there was some... There have been changes in the lots from the preliminary. But based on what you said, thank you very much.
So it's moved. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion.
Good. Anything else? I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
Yes.
Anything we need to bring up with regard to shade tree?
Now, they've already... The tree... I mean, this drawing does not include the trees.
Got it.
There's a tree agreement, and we inventory the trees. They have a planting plan that'll... If you go to Phase 1, there's a lot of trees in Phase 1, so that'll... The trees will be coming. That's...
Just want to make sure. Part of this document. Right, Rob? I don't want to speak out of turn here, because we have changed the rules a little bit, but... Every time we mention stormwater, we get points on the EPA, right? So this is a very important part of our stormwater thing, so...
Public situation, we're talking about stormwater. Check the box.
Check the box.
And trees.
And trees. Trees are stormwater.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill, will you call the roll?
Mr. Starr.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Swallow.
Yes.
Mr. Deal.
Yes.
It's approved. Congratulations. Good luck to you, then. Okay. The next item is... Involves Hartland Commerce Park. Mr. Hill, will you read the item, please?
Yes, this is item number 132024, Hartland Commerce Park Master Sign Plan per codified ordinance 1185.04. A request for a master sign plan has been submitted for review by the Municipal Planning Commission. The description of the request, Hartland Commerce Park, zoned PCDD, submits for review a master sign plan.
Who wishes to speak on behalf of this? Or describe... Mr. Gocke, if you will, read the statement. Floor will be yours.
My name is Jeff Gocke. My address is 507 West High Street. I affirm that my testimony is truthful to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, or under penalty of perjury.
Welcome.
Steep penalty when we're talking about signs.
Yeah.
Oh, well. I'll try not to lie. So where we're kind of at in this whole process is, you approved the comprehensive plan last year, a year and a half ago, maybe. We came back. You approved an amended plat where we reconfigured some site boundaries, and now, what was not included in the original comprehensive plan and declarations was a sign plan. We decided we would deal with that farther down the road when we needed it. Now we need it. If you've been past the property recently, you'll see there's some work that has commenced on refurbishing the parking lots. They're getting all-new surfaces, asphalt, as well as, we're going to try to make them look like the Gay Street parking lots, with the black fence and the brick piers and the lights, landscaping and such. And the Sandusky and Chestnut Street corner will become a employee plaza, kind of an outdoor work slash break area. We'll have some historic... Hope to have some historic kiosk. Talk about the history of the property, and if you are Corollus Engine fans, you'll see that the design of the walking path and the features in that plaza are roughly the design of a outline of a Corollus engine, which was produced on the property for many, many years, so a little throwback to history there as well. What I'd like to discuss today is a sign plan for the property. So talking about this with, I think Brian was there, and Lacy Blankenhorn, we're not presenting anything on building signage, because those are interior to the property and not visible from a public street. So there won't be, like, high up on the building, you know, company name signs that's brightly lit. Those will be closer to the ground and intended more for trucks or directional signage, pedestrians, et cetera. So what we're presenting to you is more about the park itself signage and not the individual business signage. So what... Because this is a planned development, there really is no sign rules, right? So what we tried to do, though... Rob's going to disagree, but we have a lot of leeway. We have a lot of leeway. So what we tried to do is take the existing city sign code and what exists at the industrial park and marry those together with this as much as possible, so we're not going to you and saying, we want some, like, radically different signage for this one property. Get some things that exist already. So what you'll see is, if you look at the...
Which one do you want?
The one with all the parking lots listed. The first page, I think it is.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Zoom a little bit.
Yeah.
It's coming. Maybe. Come on.
Well, Matt's working on that. Well, never mind. So if... We'll start in the southeast, so down on the Chestnut-Sandusky corner, right on the corner where that employee plaza is, there'll be kind of a low wall with some Hartland Commerce Park branded signage, and then company name signs around it, sort of like the industrial park is set up. They will be the same size as the industrial park signs, in order to stay consistent with the look and the other property.
That's for everybody, maybe the public or folks. That is State Route 13 and Commerce Drive is the sign that Jeff's referring to.
Yeah.
It is also... That ADF maintains that sign.
We do.
Yeah, so they own and maintain.
We do a great job.
They do a great job.
For the record.
Well, yeah, that's the sign we're talking about, if you're tracking along and maybe listening in.
So rather than having those large company signs high up on buildings with lots of light, we thought we would put them at the major traffic areas, and those will be kind of the marketing business identification signs. So if we travel west on Chestnut Street towards where it says A and Lot 7, there will be a perpendicular sign that's branded. You'll see that on your packet under sign A, Lot 7, if you scroll down to the next page, if that takes too long. But basically, that'll be set up about, I think it's eight feet. It's eight feet wide, and a little higher off the ground than the existing sign code with the city, but we wanted it a little bit higher, because if you look closely in your packet, it's a little hard to see on there. Oh, no, you can see it just fine. There'll be a parking lot there as well, so a truck that's parking in front of that sign, or just a car parking in front of that sign, won't block it. So someone coming west will still be able to see the sign even if there's a car in front of it. So it's a little bit higher, but otherwise, everything else complies. So that gate, which we call Gate 7 for reasons we have no idea why, because there's only, like, four gates anyway, but that one's 7. But that will be the main entrance to the property. There's a little push button, activated gate, there's a camera. There'll be another sign there that sort of sits diagonally in front of that gate, so as you pull in, there'll be the access panel here, and then a diagonal branded with company signs on it as well, so it's sort of like reassuring, am I in the right place? That's right, I'm going to this company. It's straight ahead through this gate. That complies... I believe that complies with existing sign sizes and heights as well. And then on... At each, if you go back to the other... To the map page there. At the other gates, confusingly named 3 and 6, there will be either one-way or do-not-enter or, you know, some sort of directional wayfinding signage on those gates. Some will be on poles that will be six feet, which is in... Which is conforming with existing sign code. If they're on a... Some may be on a brick pier, like a parking lot, you know, Lot... Parking Lot 7 or something. Those may be higher than six feet, but talking through with the city folks, a pillar is not a post, and thus doesn't have to follow the height requirement. So it may be a little higher, depending on the design of the pillar. The only other issue that does not comply with existing sign code is if you scroll down two pages, mayor to the archway sign. Yes, right there. So Sugar Street, if you can envision that, is currently blocked off to traffic. It will remain so. That will be a major pedestrian thoroughfare. Major, it'll be like 10 people a day, but that'll be the pedestrian thoroughfare. Hopefully, it'll be hundreds, to cross from those Sandusky Street lots onto the interior of the property to get either to the buildings that are outside the fence or to one of the gates to go inside. So we would like to put two pillars on either side of Sugar Street with kind of an... This'll be, you know, black metal archway sign that has some Hartland Commerce Park, maybe the logo, something branded for the property there, identifying with some kind of low fence and landscaped areas around it. But that is... That's a little larger than city code currently allows for, because the... We have to put the pillars on either side of the street, so that makes the sign a little wider, and then, in order to accommodate if there was ever a car or a small truck that needed to pass through there, that it could get under that sign without knocking it down.
Can we get a fire truck under it?
Oh, well, look at the height.
Looks like you could.
So there you go. Maybe we can get a fire truck under it.
We'd probably want to size that... It's very unlikely that we ever need to, but...
That's a good point. I'll confirm that.
Might want to be able to pop those posts and rock in there with a fire truck.
The posts will be removable.
Yeah. So I... You know, that's ambulance, fire truck. We don't have the large truck anymore, so something to think if we had to. We could decide it for standard.
Yeah, that's 12 feet.
Yeah, it's 12 feet.
Not to the bottom of the sign, though, right?
Bottom of the sign is... Well, it's just, I would support it.
Looks like about... Yeah, looks like...
Make sure we can get a fire truck under it.
Yeah.
If you're centered.
Yeah, so either way, basically to accommodate for the size of the road, that archway sign has to be a little larger. So those were the only two areas that didn't comply with existing code. Like I said, we tried to make everything, for ease of you guys and for consistency of look, we tried to make everything comply as much as we could, but those two areas, we had to go a little bit outside of.
Any questions for Mr. Gocke?
Can you talk to us about your positioning, all your signage, to come north? What about the folks that are coming south on Sandusky?
Good question. I forgot that part. At some point, time to be named later, there will be a similar to the southern portion with the low wall type situation on the north side. I don't know if that will go on the corner where the existing parking lot is at Burgess and Sandusky, or, as you know, the land bank bought that old store building that was there and tore it down, and we're thinking about if the land bank ever wanted... If it ever owned that whole triangle space, that would be a better location for signage out there, sort of an entry corridor. So we haven't quite figured that out yet, but there will be some north-facing signage. Yes.
Thank you. You keep mentioning the existing sign code.
Yes.
My question to everyone is, how does this comply with the new sign code under the new zoning code that will be passed in short order, whatever short order means?
For the types of what we're dealing with here, there are not going to be a lot of changes. The major changes to the sign code were removal of things that we can't legally or effectively enforce, such as the difference is in, well, messages, the messages that sign. We treated the messages differently, so a Realtor sign that looked exactly like a political sign had a different set of rules, and the Supreme Court has told us that you can't do that, that you have to... You have to deal with each type of sign equally. You can't have different rules depending on the message. So that's one of the biggest changes that comes out of the current sign code. There are some other bits and pieces, but as far as sort of the heights and the sizes of the signs, they weren't appreciably affected. So there won't be a lot of changes in what... So there won't be a lot of changes in what Mr. Gocke here is looking to do.
I just wanted to check to make sure we didn't pass something today and had, had Mr. Gocke come back in short order to have to change it, so, I understand.
If we did, well, I don't have to get into it here, but in the historic district, it's, it's lost some changes.
Well, yeah. This is the historic district, so.
Any other questions, then, for Mr. Gocke?
So, so as I see the sign be in Lot 7, there's a number of business names. Is it like the, the HOA's responsibility to update those as businesses turn over?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Uh, Mr. Brawn, any legal matters that you see with this?
Uh, I, I will agree with Mr. Gocke, for the most part, that this was a, when we developed the, the PCDD zoning code and zoning area, we did think about, you know, allowing the developer to do a very integrated sign code so that everything works as a whole, and that was really part of the initial thinking as going into it. And for the most part, that they, we used the current sign code when we were negotiating with Mr. Gocke and, and his group to, as sort of the basis, and where it made sense, we did in fact allow them to make changes. You know, and there were several times, I think, that we pushed back against some of the stuff they wanted to do to bring it closer to what's currently allowed, but all within the same sort of language, design language that they're using. So on the whole, I think it was, uh, very successful, and I think it was a, a good working relationship between the engineering office and Ms. Blankenhorn and myself and the land bank.
Mr. Ball?
I, I mean, it's from, you know, we're not putting these anywhere we have utility concerns. My, I support this. Like I said, I just make sure we get a fire truck under Sign D.
Any stormwater concerns?
No.
So we can check that box.
The runoff, the good thing about a sign is it does not create any more ERUs.
Good, good. Put that in the record.
Put that in the record. No stormwater concerns on these signs.
Check that box.
I mean, I like the, I like the gear from the engineering perspective. I like the gear.
Oh, yeah. It's cool.
Rememberating the building there. It looks sharp.
Thanks.
Well, at this point, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting down, and, uh, we'll entertain a motion so we can discuss it.
Is this a recommendation or approval?
This is approval.
Approval?
It's approval, yeah.
Well, I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, okay. Open for discussion among commission members. Todd, you look like you're...
Well, I guess the only thing is back to the, the fire. My hesitation was making it somehow contingent upon the fire trucks can get through without making Mr. Gocke come back.
Mr. Brawn, can we do conditional?
We can, why don't we, uh, we'll just say that we'll allow Ms. Blankenhorn to, to change the height for that without changing the design to make sure that a fire truck gets underneath it.
Yep. Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, there's still access.
You'll have to come back up and...
Go around the grass?
No, no.
Sugar Street's open. Sugar Street is open to Norton.
Sugar Street is open all the way to Norton, so it's just, can they turn off or onto Sugar Street, or just go, go...
If you needed to, they're gonna have to pull the ballards. So...
Right.
I'm just saying that we would, what I would recommend is you approve this with giving Ms. Blankenhorn the ability to adjust this if the fire department wants us to, because we could put this, and they could say, hell, I'm never, we don't want to touch these ballards.
Yeah.
So, there's, I mean, your, Sugar Street is a three-lane road inside the plant. And Norton Street is probably the width of a five-lane road. And then West Street is a two-lane road, so there is a lot of internal access. So if they needed to get to this corner, they have two north-south connections and this outside the fence. So it is, they've never needed to, but it's something we want to talk about. So I would just give her the administrative approval to adjust this 12-foot, three and one-quarter inch number if desired.
So we're giving Ms. Blankenhorn, uh, the option to, to work with the...
If the fire department wants the access.
If the fire department wants access there, then you all will be able to work out that, that height.
Sure. So I'll, I'll call the chief and get his input and send that to Lacy.
There was a fence there.
Off we go.
Yeah, so they would have had to have knocked that down before, but it's been taken out because of the water. I think somebody crashed into it.
Somebody crashed into it.
And we also had to dig under it, because...
Somebody's GPS taking them the wrong way.
Oops.
Mr. Hawkins, is that cleaned up, cleaned up for you?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, good. Any other discussion? Okay. Um, Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Swallow.
Yes.
Mr. Deal.
Yes.
It's approved. Okay. Is there any other, uh, business that, uh, we need to discuss? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good work.
That's pretty really cool down there. I love the parking lots and the, that's pretty neat.
Good to see that. I never thought in my lifetime that that, something would happen there, or the old middle school, so like, this is, man, oh, man. Alex was asking me, um, like, Dad, would you ever want to live, you know, that new apartment complex? I said, I have PTSD from, you know, that was my middle school.
You want to relive those things, if you, yeah.